Hello, everyone. We're just about ready to start the meeting. I just wanted Barbara Jones here for the recording. We currently do not have a chair for the commission. And we don't have a vice chair because both of those people have gone off the commission. And so I do not know, but I suspect that one of you is the longest-serving commission member, and I would like to suggest whoever that would be would call the meeting to order and get it started. Oh, well, because you were... Yes, that's right. Would that be satisfactory with everyone that the longest-serving member serves as chair to get us started? Okay? And then I will go ahead and you need to call the meeting to order. And then if you could also, I think we should probably call to order, do a roll call, and then do some introductions. And that isn't on the agenda, but if you wouldn't mind adding that? And let's just all speak loudly. You know, the recorder is here and the phone, and just to make sure everybody can hear us, just, we probably need to speak loudly.
I'm calling the meeting to order. It is 9:07. And it's the Anchorage Election Commission meeting. And I would like to take a roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Glenna Sireland, present. Mead Treadwell.
Present.
Cynthia Hawkins.
Present.
Elaine Nelson.
Present.
Lauren Lehman.
And I'm here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I would like to make some introductions. If we could go around and introduce ourselves, please. We'll start with Jamie.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Hines, and I'm a new election worker here for Barbara. I worked for the clerk's office back in 2014 and 2015. My family moved to Kenai, where I became a city clerk there in 2017, and came back recently to Anchorage, and Barbara snatched me up. So I am here, and I'm happy to be here and working as an election worker right now.
Thank you. Glad to have you on board.
Good. Where did you say you were, a clerk?
City of Kenai.
Boy, Kenai.
Yeah.
Yes, we're really lucky to have Jamie. She was, is the past, recent past president for the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks. So she is also, has a Master Municipal Clerk designation, so we're just really lucky to have her. I'm Barbara Jones. I'm the Anchorage Municipal Clerk. I will have worked for the municipality of Anchorage 22 years, beginning next month, and I have served in the clerk's office for about nine and a half years. And I really enjoy working with all of you and doing elections.
My name is Cindy Hawkins, and I've been working with elections in one capacity or another with either the state or the city for the last eight to 10 years. Started out as a precinct worker and then continued to work eventually with the municipality. And we took on a leadership role with them, with train, as well as with a number of different aspects under Barbara. This is, my tenure is now up with the commission, with newly appointed commissioners that will be taking my place, and a mandatory retirement.
Thank you. I'm Glenna Sireland. I've been working with the elections since 1985 in the, on the precinct level. And then I was asked to come on to the Election Commission several years ago, and I've enjoyed working with Barbara and the rest of the city people. And I hope to continue for a while.
My name is Elaine Nelson, and I have worked on the precinct level since 2013, when I retired. And this is my second year on the commission.
Thank you, Ms.
I'm Lauren Lehman. In regular life, I'm, I guess now I'm a husband, father, and grandfather, but I'm a consulting engineer, and we own a fishing business that is based out of Nidalee. So we have that, and I served in elected office for 18 years, and one of, four of those years was when I served one term as lieutenant governor. During that time, of course, one of the items in the portfolio of lieutenant governor is the division of elections. While I didn't have what I consider to be hands-on work with the division, the overall policy and budgets, and just ensuring that elections were conducted fairly, honestly, transparently during that time was something that I was responsible for. And I'd say that, I'm not sure what the magic was, but somehow it got confirmed by the assembly. So that's not, that's not an easy thing these days, but grateful for that.
Thank you very much. Minutes of the previous meetings.
One, one more.
Mr. Treadwell, pardon. Sorry about that.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Mead Treadwell, and just learning my way about the commission. Delighted to be serving with you. I also am a former lieutenant governor. I took office during the very contested election that was the Murkowski-Jo Miller election. So glad, got that through the certification process, got the, did audits and special university program afterwards, helped upgrade our voter registration system, helped upgrade our method of working with, taking voters who left the state off the system, helped upgrade, or helped implement automatic registration through the permanent fund dividend program and voter registration, which had some kinks. Was part of a group of states that went to the Supreme Court to try to make sure that we didn't have to check every single thing we did with the Department of Justice, and we went on that. Served, as Lauren did, as a member of the National Association of Secretary States. And looking forward to being helpful for a process of fair, honest, open, transparent elections.
Thank you very much. Now, the minutes of the previous meeting?
They are none.
All business.
None?
None. New business. And the new business is to nominate a chair and a vice chair.
So at this time, the commission typically, and all boards and commissions turn over the process to the staffer, and then the staffer accepts nominations for chair and then for vice chair, and then the commission elects its chair and vice chair, and then we will turn the meeting back over to the commission. So that would be the process. Is that satisfactory? So to start, again, this is Barbara Jones, municipal clerk, staff to the Anchorage Election Commission, and the floor is now open for nominations for chair. Yes.
I would like to nominate Glenna Sireland for chair.
Glenna Sireland has been nominated for chair. Are there any?
Madam Chair, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to nominate Lauren Lehman for chair.
So we have Glenna Sireland nominated for chair and Lauren Lehman nominated for chair. Are there any other nominations?
The nominations are closed.
Okay, the nominations are closed. We have an option. You can, you can vote yea or nay orally, or we could do a secret ballot. Do you have, that would be a little difficult for you, Mr. Treadwell, but we can figure out a way to do that. Do you have a preference how to vote?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm not worried about a secret ballot because I made a public nomination, but Madam Chair, could we ask each candidate to kind of explain what they would do as chair?
We certainly could. Mr. Lehman, would you like to go first?
Okay. I would be honored to serve, and it probably makes as much sense, you know, for me as an appointee of the current mayor, to just to make sure we not only have a path to the assembly and the clerk, but also to the mayor, and I would want to make sure that we have full participation by commission members. You know, my interest is that elections are fair, honest, transparent, okay? I'll probably repeat that many times, but that was something that I counseled our division of elections and the many workers, and I'm quite proud to say that they delivered. And I have confidence that the same thing is true and can be true here in the municipality of Anchorage. But having said that, there are, there are things that we can, I believe that we can consider to, to improve the delivery of elections. And some of that, you know, would need to be done at the assembly level, and I'd be happy to help carry that message to the assembly.
Thank you very much. I would echo what Mr. Lehman has said. My interest is also to have a chair, fair elections, and I think that I would like to put Mr. Lehman up as the chair, and I would.
I'm sorry that I'm, I'm gonna, as a staffer, Mr. Lehman has never served on the Election Commission and has not worked in an Anchorage election. He has worked for the state of Alaska. I think it will be a huge disadvantage to the election workers and election officials to have a new commissioner who does not know what the commission is doing.
Thank you very much, Barbara. I appreciate that, and I do concur with that. That's a very wise thing. Thank you. That's why we have him here.
So do you want to talk more about your experience on the commission, Glenna?
Well, I've been serving on the commission, I think, for five or six years. And as I said, I started working elections in 1985, just because as a new citizen, I wanted to learn about procedures and the rules, and learn more about the country and the election procedure. And from there, I became chair for my precinct for eight years, and then I was asked to come on to the commission, I think, five years ago. And I really enjoy serving the commission and the people.
Thank you. So since, I understand that Mr. Treadwell has not objected to oral vote, does anyone else object to an oral vote?
Well, Madam Chair, I would like to register an objection. You made a statement that essentially said you believed Lauren was disqualified, and you know, you're the, you're the city clerk, and you work for all of us, and I hope you don't believe that Lauren is disqualified. I've worked with him and have known him for, for almost 40 years, and have worked with him at the local, state, and national level on many different issues. I believe he can work with this. And what bothers me about the statement is, and very honestly, you know, I was appointed, I was, I, I was appointed or confirmed on Tuesday. I never received a phone call from you to discuss, you know, the commission and what our responsibilities are, and I have some questions. And I'm, you know, I guess what, what I'd like to do is, I didn't join this commission to make it a political football. I joined this commission to make sure it's not a political football. And this commission and some assembly things, and frankly, the behavior of some, some people during the last election have turned it into a political football, and I think it's very, very important that, that we, as a commission, discuss how do we, you know, restore confidence. And Sireland, I, we haven't had a chance to talk since I got this. I'm sure you're a person of integrity, and Lauren is a person of integrity, but I, and I, I am somebody who has worked hard to try to get the assembly and the mayor to work better together, and I, and again, I don't want this commission to be a political football, but I think, you know, one, when, Madam Clerk, you've got, you've got the mayor's opposed to change in your position, and then you've just totally disqualified the mayor's appointee as a possible chair, that doesn't, that doesn't feel right to me. And I, I would perhaps move that we recess until the third appointment is complete.
Mr. Treadwell, I would like to respond to your comments. Number one, I never said that Mr. Lehman was disqualified. What I said was Mr. Lehman has not served on the commission, and he has not worked in municipal elections. What I, what I am trying to say is that I think that it would be very helpful for both you and Mr. Lehman to work with a commission that has already been functioning, and they can explain how the process works. That's all I said. Second, you did not receive a call from me. However, you were appointed on Tuesday night, and you got an email the next day from one of our staffers. This meeting was set up prior to the assembly meeting, so as soon as you were appointed, you and Mr. Lehman, we immediately appointed you. And, you know, you can, you can, if you would, if you would like to make a motion to, I believe, a motion to postpone indefinitely the motions to nominate, you certainly can.
Madam Chair, could I comment?
Well...
Yeah. I don't like the nature of this, and Barbara, I didn't come to cross swords with you, but quite frankly, I am appalled at you stepping in, and, you know, I consider you and others here to be staff to the commission. I have served on other commissions for the municipality of Anchorage, and I have never seen somebody step in and try to dominate a commission. The commissioners are responsible for commission business, and I respect your years of service and your experience, but for you to say what you did, I consider it to be out of order. I, quite frankly, I'm offended by it. And I, I did not come to this meeting today to do battle with you. Quite frankly, I don't intend to do battle with the assembly. I come just to add value to a commission so we can have good elections, so people can have confidence in the delivery of our elections. Having said that, I have no reason to believe that we haven't been doing that, okay? And so for you to do what you did, I'd like you to think about it, and maybe you have thought about it, that I'd like you to think about how you would feel if somebody did that to you. It's, it doesn't feel very good.
Well, through the chair...
But I'm, I'm strong enough to deflect it, and I will deflect it. I'm just saying, I don't think that was a good thing for you to step in to do.
Well, through the chair, thank you very much, Mr. Lehman. I think that you will find that we do run fair, transparent, open elections, and I look forward for you to serve, you and Mr. Treadwell, to serve on the commission and learn from the current commissioners. And I anticipate that it would probably be appropriate for you to serve as a commission officer at some time in the future. I think that would be great, but I think right now it would be, I am thinking about my words, and I think it would be great if you would learn what we do in municipal elections first before you served as an officer.
Well, Madam Chair, I, you know, I appreciate the differences between state and municipal elections. I worked with our elections director when I was lieutenant governor to see if we could support or, you know, understand the mechanics when certain members of the assembly then were trying to align our election. I worked very closely with the Association of Municipal Clerks. We, we had very common purposes in everything from registration issues, finding poll workers, finding precinct capabilities around the state, sharing machines, upgrading software. And I think to suggest that the person who's been the state lieutenant governor doesn't understand how municipal elections work. I've been an election worker in, or, you know, working as candidates probably since I was about 12 years old, and have been in many, many municipal elections where I was growing up, as well as once I moved to Alaska. So, and I'm not running for the chairmanship, I just, you know, I share Lauren's concern. Let me, let's just say this. We know we've got one more seat to be filled by the assembly. I would be very happy to, to suggest that we have, that we keep the provisional chair that we have now as acting chair while we wait for that vacancy to be filled, and postpone as part of the annual meeting, and I'd be happy to move that in the nature of a compromise so we can sit down and talk. It just, I don't want to get off on a bad start, and, you know, I'll, I'll put it this way. Most of my job as lieutenant governor was to defend my election workers, to empower them, and I see that very much as a part of my job with you on this commission, is to empower you to do your job fairly and so forth. But to the extent that there are some concerns in the community about confidence of how city elections are run, I think we need to frankly discuss that, and the reason why I put Lauren forward as chair is because it was going to show a change in direction, and I've never seen Lauren cook a book. I've seen him work between all sides or factions in the community to bring things to resolution, and I could, I could go into chapter and verse there. So at any rate, I, I would like to, to suggest, and we can do it in the form of a motion, that we accept the provisional chair that we've got now and wait until the third appointment is approved by the assembly, and we could change that if the assembly decides to throw its hands up in the air before the election and before we have to start making canvassing decisions.
Mr. Treadwell, the motion that you originally made was to postpone the election. We do not have a nomination for a provisional chair. It's a nomination for chair. And in, during the, and we also have a nominate, we have two nominees, and we were discussing voting, you know, orally, and you suggested postponing this motion. So the motion on the floor now is a motion to postpone the nomination of chair. And I have a motion. I need a second. Is there a second?
I, I just asked for recess for a few minutes.
You know, Mr. Lehman, for... She isn't the chair. She turned the gavel over to the staff. Can you please explain what the recess is for?
To talk to other members.
Other members of what?
What are we here for?
You want to, you want to have a recess to talk to the other members of the commission?
Yes.
Okay, so I think the commission, I think you can all decide if you want to do that. It has to be on the record, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stop the recording. Your discussion has to be on the record.
If I'm at recess, I'm at recess.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Lehman. The Open Meetings Act requires that if the commission is in a meeting and the commission members are discussing anything, it must be on the record. You cannot meet separately or serially with commission members. I understand the Open Meetings Act doesn't apply to the state legislature, but it does apply to the commission members.
Well, quite frankly, I never thought you were going to be here to dominate a meeting. I thought you were here to be support, and I intend to be here to be a support to you as clerk. For you to be doing what you're doing is, in my opinion, is way, way out of bounds. I mean, you're, you're acting like I don't know how to run a meeting or I've never been in a meeting before. I've been, I've chaired, probably chaired hundreds of meetings, and we've always allowed recesses. Have you ever watched the legislature?
Mr. Lehman, as I've said, the Open Meetings Act does not apply to the legislature. It does apply to the Anchorage, the Anchorage Election Commission, and the commission cannot recess to discuss anything before the body. That is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So there's a motion on the floor. Have you seconded the motion, Mr. Lehman?
Let me ask you, commissioners, have you put up with the same type of domination of the commission during the time that you've been here?
I will comment. You are in a situation right now, Mr. Lehman, in that we are in an organizational meeting right now, under normal circumstances, under a mission meeting. It would be totally led by the chairman.
Right.
We are in a transition point at this time, and without an active chairman, we have the staff person, in this case, it's clerk, which is conducting the meeting. Until we have a full chair, then we not conduct meetings for ourselves.
But it's one thing to conduct a meeting and to, to be, I don't know if I want to say gentle, but to be open and accepting of comments and inputs from commission members. It's another thing to step in and try to dominate. One person dominate five people on a commission. That, you know, I certainly didn't come today thinking that this was going to, that this was going to happen. I mean, you may come with a reputation, Barbara, but I did not come with the intent to, to not work cordially with you. It never crossed my mind, not once. You know, I never thought that this would happen. I probably would have said no to the mayor, you know, when, when he asked, he says, you know, we need to get somebody that the assembly will confirm to, to the commission. And I said, well, I'm willing to do it, but I'm willing to do it under the conditions that it's, it's a cordial, working relationship, an honest one, and fair.
I'd like to make a comment. I've been working with this commission for many years, and I have found Ms. Jones to be an absolute pillar and honest, and she has guided us through this process for years, and nobody knows the process like Barbara does, and I truly value her guidance throughout all of these years. And I think that you've been very unfair to her by jumping on her like that. I think she was quite correct in taking over because it was the staff's time to make one.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to get on her case. I'm just trying, anybody's going to want to defend themselves to, you know, from, from things said about them, and I'm, I'm just saying that normally, if a staff person is acting in a, in a position right now of, you know, chairmanship so the commission can do organizational work and do its business, it's not going to be somebody that's going to try to dominate what the commission does.
I don't believe Ms. Jones was dominating. She was just guiding us and giving us the... She was just guiding us and giving us the actual facts and the procedure.
So, right now, there is a motion and a second on the floor to postpone the nominations. I'm going to call the roll call. How do you vote on the motion to postpone Ms. Ireland?
Nay.
Mr. Treadwell? Ms. Hawkins?
Nay.
Ms. Nelson?
Nay.
Mr. Layman?
Yes.
The motion fails.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Treadwell?
I, I have one question, and it could be in the form of a point of order, but how many members are on the commission? And do our terms last for three years, or do they last until we are replaced?
Mr. Treadwell, that's a multi-art question, and I can answer part of it. You have set terms, and I do not know exactly what the terms are right now. I know that it's a three-year term unless, for example, someone resigns and someone's appointed to a partial term. So, I think that's, that's a partial question, partial, partial response to your question.
Okay, Madam Chair, then this is a point of order that because you cannot tell us definitively whether or not this commission has two people on it, three people on it, four people on it, or five people on it who are duly voting members to the commission, my point of order is that we must recess until we get a legal opinion on, on that issue.
Mr. Treadwell?
I'm happy to, to return based on the call that's there, but I, I call a point of order that you're just taking a vote with people who may not be duly, duly appropriate commissioners.
Mr. Treadwell, that is, your point of order is denied. That was not your question. Your question was what terms do people serve? My response was that they typically serve three-year terms. And that was the answer to your question. The, the people that are on this commission are currently duly appointed, just like you, Mr. Layman, Ms. Nelson, Ms. Ireland, and Ms. Hawkins are all duly appointed and serving on the commission. Your point of order is denied. Before the commission now is the motion to nominate Glennis Ireland or Lauren Layman. I am going to call the roll, and you may vote. We'll start. Ms. Ireland, who do you vote for? Ms. Ireland, who do you vote for?
I would vote for myself.
Mr. Treadwell, who do you vote for?
Mr. Layman.
Ms. Hawkins, who do you vote for?
Ms. Ireland.
Ms. Nelson, who do you vote for?
Ms. Ireland.
Mr. Layman, who do you vote for?
Lauren Layman.
The majority vote, three votes for Ms. Ireland, two for Mr. Layman. Ms. Ireland is the duly elected chair. We will now open the floor for nominations for vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Lauren.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing and hearing no other nominations, nominations are closed. We can vote by unanimous consent. All those in favor of Mr. Layman for vice chair, please say aye.
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 All right, Mr. Layman is elected, duly elected as vice chair. I will turn over the meeting back over to Ms. Ireland as the chair.
Thank you very much, Barbara. We need to review the 2022 election calendar, which you have included. It's the blue paper.
Yes. Madam Chair, we wanted to provide the calendar to you so that the commission knows the upcoming dates for the election. We wanted, we know it's time for you to establish your meeting and training schedule. You can see underneath the calendar, we have provided the Anchorage Election Commission guide. We have partially updated the guide. As you know, the assembly updated Title 28, the Municipal Elections Ordinance, on December 28th. So, we still have a little bit of review that we would like to do with you and making sure that we've incorporated all of the changes from the code. So, you can go ahead and take those copies with you to review. But we would like you to look at the calendar and set up some dates for yourselves, to come back, review the, the guide, and, and then, of course, you know the training, and you can talk about that with the, the other commissioners about some of the dates that you need to come. I'm not sure if we have logic and accuracy testing. It's probably not on here, but that's one of the dates that you usually come. We just, if you'd like to add to your calendars, on March 3rd, March 3rd at 1:00 PM, we have logic and accuracy testing scheduled. And then, of course, we have the meeting on April 22nd.
Do the chair have a question?
Yes.
Were there going to be established dates for the other training sessions for vote centers, all of that? And would we be available to attend those?
Yes. So, I can tell you, some of those dates, we don't publish those dates because those are not code-driven public dates. But I will tell you, we have tentatively scheduled signature verification training We have review and resolution training on March 8th at 10:00 AM. Electronic voting team training at 9:00 AM on March 9th. Special circumstance voting training at 10:30 on Friday, March 4th.
What are you reading off of your, your own internal?
Yes, this is our internal training.
Is that something that you can?
I, I can provide these dates to you. I just, I think that if you know the dates that the training is coming up, you want to set your training before that. And then, these are optional trainings that you can, these are for the, training for the 60 temporary election workers that we bring in. So, I'm, the, the first, so the first training that we have scheduled would be, we have temporary address training on February 17th. So, that would be the first day of training that's coming up. Okay? If that helps you decide when you would like to schedule another election commission meeting between now and February?
February 17th.
Yes. The, the elections team would probably recommend that you do, if you would consider doing training, the, the week of January 31st through March 4th. That is, that week, we, we don't have anything scheduled in the election center. It is the last day for candidates to withdraw. But the following week is a busy week for us. The, we are going to be finishing the ballot cases and getting the ballot cases to our printer that week. So, that's the week of, the 7th is a little bit busier. We probably could do it on the 10th of February.
You, Barbara, you said through March 4th, but you probably meant through February 4th?
I, yes. Oh, yes, I apologize. You're absolutely correct.
That's fine.
I'm looking at a calendar that's got February, and I, I apologize for that.
No, that's fine. I just want to...
Yep, you are correct.
Okay. But you said February 10th could?
February 10th is a possibility as well.
Could work for you, that's late enough in that week that, that, that date is okay right now, it's okay with me.
Yeah, Madam, I, I would like to be in person at, at a meeting, and I think I have to be in Houston on the 8th and 10th. Let me just check on this, if there's any. There's, there's a slim chance that I'm scheduled to be in, in Texas on business on the 9th and 10th of February. If there's any chance, it could be a little bit earlier or a following week, it would, it would be good, but, no, I mean, I can join telephonically if not. I'd like to meet the other commissioners, frankly. I, I'm less worried about the training that, that you're presenting and discussing then than how we implement the new ordinance on observers, and just trying to figure out how that all is going to work. So, I, I just think the odds are pretty good that I will not be present in person on the 9th.
What date is available next? I think it's 11th and the same. I was changing for you. Well, that's good. You also said there was availability at the first week in February?
Yes, there is.
Mr. Layman, how was your schedule for that?
I'm, I'm okay except for Thursday, the 3rd.
So, Mr. Treadwell, are you available on the, on the 10th?
Not on the 10th.
No.
On the 3rd?
No, I, the 3rd is a difficult day for me, but otherwise, during the week of January 31st to, to February 4th, other, well, the 4th in the morning would probably be difficult too. I'm, I'm, right now, I'm planning to be out of town on, from about midday on the 3rd to midday on the 4th. So, I would say for me, Tuesday or Wednesday, the 1st or 2nd of February would be fine.
Yeah, those, those dates would work for me also, Madam Chair.
So, okay, so, how about February the 2nd?
Is that workable?
Groundhog, yeah, Groundhog Day.
So, could, could we do it February 2nd in the afternoon? Would that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to go at 1:00, 1:30, to what time?
For me, I'd prefer a little bit later, you know, 2:00 would be, would be better for me than the, than the earlier times.
2:00 then? 2:00 on the 2nd?
And Madam Chair, I'd like to schedule the meeting for probably two hours, and if you need to extend, you may want to do that. I would like to include a tour of the election center, so we should probably do a tour of the election center, and then review your, the guide. And of course, I'll email the guide to everyone, and then you can review it if you have any comments. And then, we can talk about, go through it at the meeting.
Thank you very much. So, then, your next meeting is scheduled for 2:00, February 2nd. And lasting about two-plus hours. Any, any other comments? I think then we can just go on to number six?
Yep.
Which is member comments. Do we have any comments from any members of the commission or the staff? Just a moment.
I'll just say that I never intended any of my comments to be rude or inappropriate, but I think you'll find me to be direct. I have strong passions about what I believe to be honor, and, and so I never intended that. And I was, quite frankly, surprised by what I heard this morning. And I'll probably think about it more during the day. Barbara, I, I want to be able to work with you and, you know, have a lot of respect for your years of, of service to the municipality of Anchorage, and especially in elections. So, I don't want to take away anything from that, you know, regarding the, what I consider at least a minor altercation this morning that got off to, got off to a start that was less constructive than I think it should be.
Thank you, Mr. Layman. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I, this is me, Treadwell. I want to say I look forward to working with you, the staff, the commission, and the other commissioners. I'd like to make a request through you to staff that we, we get legal clarification to understand when commissioners' terms begin and whether they end, especially on the question of whether they end three years from the effective date of an appointment to, to the question of whether or not you just are, you're commissioner indefinitely until you're replaced by the assembly. It, and it's, it's not, not aimed at anybody who's sitting here today, it's, it's aimed at just clarity.
I'd like to ask Ms. Jones to make a clarification there, please.
Mr. Treadwell, I, I, we can certainly ask for a legal opinion, but I can send you the code and the appointment documents, and I think it's probably pretty clear from that. So, I'll go ahead and send that to everyone, if that's okay with you. And, and then, if you wish further legal clarification, you can let me know, and I'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And, and, you know, for, for your own information, I spoke to the city councillor yesterday just to make sure that I didn't have any of the conflicts, because I did read the code and, and the code is, you know, since it's our job to advise the assembly on the code, there may be some clarity issues there that we want to advise them on, on the chair.
Thank you.
And, and then, second, Director Jones, I, I'd be interested in... I'd be interested in, if it's allowed under the Open Meetings Act, for me to meet with you just to ask a few questions, but I won't take the whole commission's time. I'd like to try to have a meeting with you sometime in the next... I get home sometime next week, so...
Through the chair. I am not covered by the Open Meetings Act. You are covered by the Open Meetings Act. So you absolutely may meet with me, Mr. Treadwell. You... I am on the email that was sent to you. And if you would like to reply by email and indicate a few times that you'd like to meet, I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments?
One last. I've been saying goodbye to this commission for several meetings now. And I can explain that to Mr. Treadwell in that my commission appointment ended in October. And until there is an effective replacement for me, I have six months that I can serve if necessary. And that is the capacity I am here today on. I have enjoyed working with, on the commission. It's been a nice transition from working as a little grunt on the election all the way through to see the process. I welcome both of the new commissioners to the commission because I think it's always nice to have good, fresh blood. And obviously, you are passionate about elections as much as anybody here on the commission, which is one of the reasons why we do what we do. So I look forward to, if necessary, I'll be here in February. And if not, I wish everyone a roll call and for this next election season.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. We would like to express our thanks to you for all your service and your wisdom over these many years. And we just wish that you weren't stepping down, but we understand that you have other commitments and priorities. So thank you very much for your service.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I would like to make one little tweak. Ms. Hawkins is correct about her service. However, the extension in the code to serve until someone appointed is for 120 days.
120 days.
Yeah. But in any event, I will provide that code site to everyone so that you will all know exactly what that is.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Any other comments? Well, if there are no more comments, I believe that we are ready to adjourn. And it's... There is someone from the public on the call. Okay. So you might want to ask if anyone from the public wants to... Anybody from the public would like to make comments at this time? Do so now, please.
Yes, my name is Joyce Anderson, and I am a former commission member. And I am very passionate about elections. It's been in my blood since the early '90s. And so I will be attending commission meetings. And I feel that elections are so important and have been said during the meeting several times about transparency and accuracy and so forth. So I just wanted to say that I probably will either be in person or will be attending the meetings via teleconference such as today. So thank you for allowing me to comment, and I hope that the commission can move forward and do the job that they are required to do, both by charter and ordinance. And so I would say welcome to everyone.
Thank you very much, Ms. Anderson. We appreciate those comments very much. Any more? Any further comments from anyone? It is 2 minutes to 10, 8 to 10, and I will call this meeting adjourned.